Now, on this New Carolina State Council's Rock Station tour order Monday, July 9th, 2018. This is Verne.
Mayor Reynolds. Mr. Lowry.
Here.
Mr. Leidy.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Shammy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsay.
Here.
The six members present.
Standing for the flag allegiance. Flag up front. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the main statement for the invitation by Councilman Leidy.
It's our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity for us to be here tonight, Lord. We ask that you guide us to help us with the decisions made here tonight, glorify your name. Lord, we know that you are the giver of all things good, and for that we are thankful. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you have any comments on Mayor Verne? Here in God.
Oh, we got one.
Is this where I...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would just like to see the city do something about a noise ordinance. As I said at the council meeting, in talking with the deputies, there's very little for them to go on in terms of enforcement. And the past three or four years, there's been more than one location near my house that has been extremely disruptive, communications for hours at a time. And I can provide dates and times and locations and all that type of thing if you would like. I think when the charter was drafted and the Charter Review Committee that happened, I don't remember, 10, 12, maybe 15 years ago, I think there was a Charter Review that was done. And I feel certain that people assumed that common sense would prevail. We're a small town, we try to be neighborly with each other, and, you know, if somebody's gonna have a new roof put on their house, it's gonna make it a lot of noise. Maybe next month I'm gonna have the fence put in, and it's gonna make it a lot of noise. And everybody's accommodating for that type of thing. But some of the things that happen, happen, are excessive, they're repetitive, and again, there's very little that the deputies can do about it. There's a couple of bad apples that spoil them a whole bunch, and I mean, that's what we need to address and put some specific things in the ordinance that are enforceable, and everybody knows what to expect. I'm not trying to shut down city-sponsored activities, I'm not trying to shut down if somebody wants to have a wedding in their backyard, but this excuse that there's a quote unquote birthday party every Saturday night that starts at 2:00 in the afternoon and goes till 10:00, when the deputy can shut it down, and that happens time after time after time all summer long. I'm sorry, nobody has that many birthdays. And even if it is a legitimately birthday party, it's too many. I've talked with a number of people who have heard it, driving by, deputies have put it on patrol and have gone to do what they can even before a complaint is made. Based on what deputies have told me, other people are complaining, not just me, I may be the one who are coming forward and determine, determine folks that something we done. Do you have any questions for me? I'm happy to. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Verne. Mr. Verne.
Other bumping street, which is the most heavily traveled street in the city, probably is not just neighbors, it's probably motorcycles. Motorcycles, I don't think there's a person on motorcycle that is one month of us. Semis, even though the signs say, "Council, they know when you break," they still do come out on track at 5:00, 7:00, 11:00. And radios, I mean, most everybody that drives on the main streets is deaf because they have the radio up so loud that I can hear two blocks away. It's not just at night, it's in daytime, it's 24/7. There are a number of times that I've awakened in the middle of the night, somebody making too much of a semi or a motorcycle or a radio. So, we need to address that, too.
Thank you so much. Councilman Congressman, anything on the day end?
Mr. Verne. Mr. Verne, I believe that there was an ordinance passed last year about noise ordinance in the city, day in and night, correct?
I think it was referring to the ATV ordinance, I deal with ATVs.
I'm pretty sure there was something passed last year on that. It's taking only, it needs something with decimals.
That's the ATV ordinance, for those that are riding, they're running with ATVs in the parkway or whatever.
That's the only noise ordinance I remember, is the decimal on the ATV that they're running, I guess they're running in the park.
I don't think it was decimals, I think it said if you heard it from like 50 feet away or something like that. I don't think I need to use the decimal, it was like, it's something that had something to do with like 50 feet away or 60 feet away.
Well, I'm pretty sure there was also a deal last year, year before, that there was something passed for loud radios and the decimals on the loud radios in the city.
Other council members of the council, do you remember?
I don't.
I just remember the ATV.
I'm not saying they're not, we passed a lot of them here, but I have a pass here on the arm. But I think the ATV one was actually passed, and Ken was still his new manager, but when Cooper was, and it started happening again, the city just shortly had a great discussion on it, when she had come back in.
According to what we've got on the latest municipal code, the last thing that's been passed was November the 4th of 2013. And I don't think there's been anything passed on the sound or a noise or a noise sensor. This is a direct copy right out of the code.
Well, it could be, it could be more updated or further back, depending on what public code they put it under. Could be on a lawful occasion, you could go to the general section.
But I would imagine from what we're, well, I'm saying, here it was passed in 13.
Yeah.
And three. General chapter 476. And it's probably restricted to snowmobiles, go-kart, ATV, all purpose, high-roller, all purpose vehicles, any similar type of vehicle. It says in the manner that all of the cars operated, the modes of particular vehicles, plainly all of the distance, if you keep them on, the way in the vehicle being operated. And it says something in here about the manner that all of the dust, due to accumulating and operating of it, damages, screws or holes. And it accepts it will be those type of vehicles being used for agriculture or military purposes, such as, sometimes they're about 20 pounds, say, 70. So, that was only 1,000.
So, at that point, we go back to the original noise ordinance, which would be 64810.
Yeah, I think we're trying to, Mr. Verne is trying to, probably we have almost 70. We probably have stuff in our bracket that's in there, in terms of, and stuff like that. So, we have a little more research at the council, the city council, which is pertaining to what Mr. Verne.
So, basically, we've got man's situation, Mr. Verne's situation, they're two separate, two separate.
They're gonna have to be, there's one deal with the public program, and there's, uh, I'm a, that is not.
That would be a safe assumption, but again, if we've got a basic quiet hour, quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00.
Well, the quiet hour only restricts certain things.
Right.
Can't pull the code.
But we go along with the, you know, the ordinance that extends those from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and it gives you a different class, class A, B, C of different decimals.
See if my hotspot pulls up, Randy, you can use it if it does.
But if I may, it's not just private ordinances, or private residences, one of them is, maybe private functions there.
I think, and I'm gonna say this now before we get through it, we all need to be, I understand everyone's side, we've got to all follow that. Those side of the community, and their culture is one that they want to put together, and have some time. So, I think we need to find the people who are not a benefit, so they have to keep the people at heart of this, or, we don't want to back off very standard, and they come in here saying that we're not something that's a cultural thing.
I don't know of any cultural restriction that says people need to be, have parties, have any people there.
Right, there's some, but our family is in, it was two houses down from me now, and they do seem, they have family, friends over there, and they have a few in the backyard that they just need to be good about, or do that, but they do down there and they'll go around.
Well, I'm sorry, I've lived in my house for 20 years, and nobody has the right to come in in the last three or four years and start driving my property down and sell. This is something that invite ever sell my house now, Ohio, the state of Ohio has a law, when you put your market, you put your property on the market, you have to disclose any deficiencies that you are, I mean, related to that property. And I could be sued if I tried to sell my house and did not disclose that all the thousands of dollars I've put into a back porch and patio and driveway and home improvements and all that, and you cannot sit outside on your own property and enjoy it for hours at a time, almost every Saturday, because other people in the last few years have decided to do something that other people in the neighborhood do not do. I think we have norms within the city of Ohio that need to be respected. That's why I live here, that's why I bought my house here. And I don't think I should have to suffer my property values and my enjoyment of my own property, because there's other people that are determined to not be respectful of how they're impacting other people.
All right, should I say Aaron's phone?
I don't have anything, I'm just saying we gotta, it's totally.
I'm not saying don't have parties, I'm not saying don't park all around my house so I've got no parking bringing my guests. That's a problem, I'm not asking you to address that. I'm just saying that if they're gonna have something on a repeated basis, have it, but don't cause me to diminish my enjoyment of my property because of what you wanna do. I'm not doing anything to say to you, you know, I'm not making noise when your children are lying asleep or whatever, I mean, I can go on and on and on. I'm telling you, I'm determined.
Mine's on also, Randy. You can't bring it. I've got a.
I can't send it over. I can't send it over.
I can't bring up the full thing, I've got part of it, like, let's see, ordinance 11-21 passed on 4/11, uh, let's see, attracting attention by loud noises and amplified devices, you know, it's, I mean, it's all here, I just can't get it to open on the link.
We need to come up with something, we got citizens asleep, they work second and third shift.
But isn't the, isn't the tricky part gonna be, and I'm not, I'm not like, I said, isn't the tricky part gonna be, and I'm not, I'm not saying that your issues aren't as important as what's allowed and what's not allowed, I mean, there's gonna be so many variables, you know what I mean? I mean, um.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you mind, if we can jump around on the agenda.
I'm just gonna cut it here fast, too, I'm gonna let that, it's a gash together, it's on the agenda to talk about.
Okay.
If I can continue, then I'll turn it over to you, unless the ordinance and resolutions are here to deal with.
No, we're done with all that.
Yeah, we have none of that, business, I'll turn it over to the city mayor, Mr. Verne.
Do you mind if we draw it down to number C before we do A?
Absolutely.
A, Mr. Cook, you're not 100%. I have to do that. Boys in the City, what we have here, I did some research, and, I think, there's three things that are printed out, the first one is, it looks like this, it's a newspaper article from a little city in Washington, and I really love what they've done. I don't ask them to pronounce the city, chew, weed law, what they did is they actually invented their one, they had one from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., but they also said rules for 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 as well. So, the register that was on the map, I'm just reading through today, will be 60 DPA and 50 BPI, I don't know what any of that means, but I don't know what that's called, all that stuff, sound like. And it has also restricted you to retail businesses as well. So, I brought this so the council can get a look at it, because it looks like they had to find, that they were using sound devices, so I actually called their city today, and I had some things, navigating their website, and on the back of this, that part of the newspaper article, just as one little paragraph, I actually got a copy of their code, it's actually in their books. So, this is what there looks like. We will have different classes as far as that, I'm assuming they did their class ABC because like, us will have different sized yards and different parts of town, like R7 yards are smaller than R5s, R2 yards are larger than R7s, so I don't know really their logic behind what they did, but if I had to guess, I would say it's because of the size of the parcels. So, I don't know if that's something we just do across the board, no matter what residential zone you live in, or we have the one that is two, if they're R5s, I think it'd be real confusing if you said in this district you can have this, or that, you can have that, it probably isn't flat across the board, it wasn't huge industry streamline for everyone else. But I do like what they have, and I'll be honest with you, I've not read this thing word for word, I just brought it into the work section for some people to take home in those committees. But there are a lot of things we're gonna have to do by reading this, now, this is the state of Washington, it's not Ohio, but I'm sure we're gonna have to probably define more than just saying you can't be 60 decimals outside the yard. The reason why they have it in there, more than that, probably you're defining what, how they can use, what they have to use to measure it, probably the definition of real properties, the exemptions that could be underneath there, we can't tell someone they can't do, we prepare on our work during the day, they need to get the work done, we got a lot that happened, that we put in the, so that kind of the normal maintenance stuff, but I think what we're seeing, and she is not the one that I get to involve, it happens a lot, it happens to people who have a good party, and just almost like to take it to the next level, they will put a microphone up to their radio, so the blast might be enough. So, why is that a thing? I don't agree with that. Obviously, with like, your guys, this is, but I would just recommend looking over this to find out, maybe pick and choose, but it does give a good baseline to jump from off of how you guys want to move your city forward, with your residents. And the other ones I brought out, not a lot of people got a law with daytime stuff, we see a lot of stuff on nighttime. So, I just kinda was going through my search results a little bit more, and the rest of these two I picked out just because they have a little bit more information about the fines they charge, first conviction, second commission, the proclamation they had did, and that's the ones that are lines on the first one. And this one I thought, it had, they did mention loud, because we have a lot of people on there, so. I might just really build some things so council can have something to read and kind of base off of, and the citizens who came, but I think, I think this chill alarm they did it right, they have the daytime hours, and I'm wondering if these, me and the same man, and I have a few passes, phone call, about this. We tend to forgive, people just think it's daytime, you have a daytime, I'd fail to do whatever I want, but what about your neighbor, two houses down, they were touching, you know, just sleeping in it, you know? And I'm a firm believer, if ever one or two people that come and say something, there's far more out there that are suffering that don't wanna get involved. But I think this is the dress that we, the council needs to look at, and I would just also recommend the council take into the fact that we do have a high density population, I'm not saying that they can and can't, according to anyone's rights, but they have rights to their property too, just like we don't have rights to our property. What's that never grounds, I think, Rob, without being next to the, the rest of the light, it doesn't matter, that just makes it real bad.
Inspector, did I, do we have the equivalent to Mayor, do that's much?
It would have to be through the sheriff's office.
Hi.
It would have to be through the sheriff's office, the city person does not.
We would probably have to buy.
Did they have anything, they have any, they have?
There's, there's free apps you can download, I can give you my information.
Well, we would probably have to look into an app, and post this, an app.
Something up in the corner.
But there is an app that's associated with the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, is a free sound meter, downloaded on iTunes, and it's a sound meter, it's all in, designed for work sites, but also provides effort, noise, materials for everyday use, and can be downloaded and used by anyone in any location. The app can save and share measurement data. And there's also another thing I got that is from HealthyHearingFoundation.org, which is a magazine that is, and they list two specific devices, and details from the article that was posted in January this year. And I think we need to come off, the city provides free smartphones to the deputies for the use while on COVID.
We did, they have cell phones, so rather than something, and I gotta look at it because that, Mr. Lynn, you know, you have a whole, I mean, someone sells one, maybe a cellphone, or anything.
And if you Google decimal meters, you can find them from $22 to $400.
Oh, was that $22?
He probably have any access to his speaker, or whatever.
I, 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 I don't have stuff, so, um, you know, the only thing I know about decimals was when I bought an exhaust, and, you know, the exhaust fans appear, I don't have any idea what those are in this, so we just look at, I think this is a great starting place for, for this research. I think we've got 22 or 40.
Yeah, I don't know if 60 decimals mean versus 50, it sounds like the max times 50, so clearly, wouldn't it make sense the higher the decimal, the louder?
Yes.
They might allow it, so they, oh, that makes sense, and my head on target, make it quiet during the day, not make it.
But to your point, you know, maybe sleep during the day, you can have to change your older population in town, folks that need, you know, that kind, I think we need to look at something that's.
The only time we hear a noise in our town is still in April, July, and it's getting very loud.
You think, you think the problem is, I don't see a huge problem, I could be wrong with homeowners, it's probably people who rent, make the most money, I'm just speculating. I was, I, 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 I got to my girl house the other day, and that's why my ex was coming in the door, because I was driving, and I heard music, it was like, all of a sudden, it was like, it hit me, it was definitely how it would have worked, and I'm like, aw, wait, well, I have, do you live right here? Yeah. Well, I may be the same thing, I know that, but the thing would be, maybe three hundred or something, for people, uh, you say, I don't know, if it was ever, because if it's all being three hundred or something, all that, it's like.
You talking about something, you going?
Yeah.
But I think it is something that we should consider, that's, that's another potential remedy, that have better business working, than after 30 mornings, and the weather is fine, and then again, the landlord is fine.
I don't know if we need to, we hold, we know it's possible, we have kind of grass on the property, but I don't have a part of that down, we could definitely, like, for a whole, but I think for any kind of accident, it's a landlord, city would probably have to pass like that, landlord, you know.
And the landlord may not know this is doing wrong, but we can try and be landlord is, and send them up, and make them aware of this.
And why, I don't think, a lot of, a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of fluke, because like, when we do grass accidents, or we get that violation, and I would, as a planning director, when I was a planning director, I did one, this is what I found, like, the good years of tours, and they truly got us, like, hey, there's a violation, they don't do it, you have to pay for it, now, like, what do you have? Do we assess your property tax? Or that gets our attention a little bit? It does, because we are by law, by the power of my school, and assess your property tax for nuisance or grass accidents. We couldn't sit there and say, you know, we, your house is a noise violation, so we're gonna charge this $40, we need to do your taxes, if that makes sense, like, we're out.
Wouldn't that be in the nuisance stuff part, which you just said, the other state?
Well, I guess it would.
And if we, if we can make that fine, I don't know, the first time, 150, and jump it out, and every time, to get, and make the landlord, or make the landlord, or the owner, or whatever, I think you'd get it stopped pretty quick. Most landlords would not tolerate that.
I would not tolerate it.
Would you tolerate that as a landlord?
No.
I know I would not tolerate it as a landlord, that'd be a two speed up there.
Depends a lot of landlords do this, to be honest with you.
Well, this is true, depends on real landlords, if the landlord is not a good landlord, then there's, you know, there's not a lot you can do going that route.
And I'm sure the state of Ohio is a man, or you, the difference between a nuisance stat is a big one, that maybe your grass is high, or you have trash in your backyard versus noise. Trash and grass present a public safety risk, and noise, it could just not. So, again, it's just, I'm with her, I'm just thinking out loud, but see if they're on the work.
One thing I would like to say, though, again, is that the two repeat properties that I get trouble with, one is a private residence, I don't know if they own their rent, and the other one is a church, so I don't wanna restrict, yeah.
Wow.
Ever been yelled at by a priest?
By a priest?
Yeah, so I don't wanna restrict this just to private residences. Again, weddings, funerals, church service, I know that I'm not gonna be able to park anywhere around my house on Sunday morning, I know that. The house was, the church was there when I bought my property, I signed up for that, I get it, but the rest of this, knowing.
Are you, are you saying that people's parking on the street in front of their property?
Yeah, but it's public, it's public parking.
Right, so I don't know what, if anything, you can do about that.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
But now, maybe a parked or newer vehicle there?
No.
That might be a difference.
No, let me, no, let me clarify, I'm just saying that I know, I bought a house that's across the street from a church, I know there's gonna have church services on Sunday morning, that church was there when I bought my property, I know there's gonna be noise from the church on Sunday morning, I know there's gonna be a lot of parking on Sunday morning, I know there's gonna be weddings and funerals and parking and noise and all of that, I get that, that's not the concern. But I don't, I don't want this ordinance just to be restricted to private residences. If you have a party at the church, and you have it outside, and you put speakers that are this tall and hook it up to a microphone, and it goes on for six hours, what's the difference between that and somebody doing it in their backyard?
Is, is the church do that?
They used to.
So, I don't know.
I'm sorry, yeah, we make one more, the noise in the Catholic altar at the church, the noise level has improved, it's not great, I asked him, Peter, what went on this past Saturday night at the church, so it's gotten better, but it needs to get better still.
Is it the church there, or like, the Catholic church?
It's a Hispanic church, they're Hispanic church, rather. They are Hispanic church, rather. I don't know that, I don't know that anyone has visited.
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart, of course.
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart, nothing from there.
And the building that they, they rent that.
How long?
Well, it could be rented by anyone. They, yeah, the Catholic Catholic Center is where they have Sunday school and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. But they, it's got a nice reception hall upstairs with a full kitchen and they rent that out to anyone.
Okay. Uh, another upside of this is to, we gotta think of our own swimming pool.
About what?
Noise level of the swimming pool. You gotta restrict all these businesses that are in other ones on the pool's going to suck. I mean, you have the city policy.
The ball fields.
The ball fields.
Announcing and stuff. What about like the Heritage of Flight festivals?
All of them, well, I, I think you, when you look through this and you guys do your research and how you represent your ordinance to your city, count to your, to your city, is that you'll find that there's exceptions. So the exception for the wall, the exception for the private events, you know, how you guys want to draft it and get it set up. But I'd rather you guys do your research and find out what bits of DC you want to bring to your, to your citizens.
The, uh, how much noise does that fool make?
It depends on how busy it is.
The one thing that's interesting.
More of a low volume, I mean, there's no speakers, you have the wire.
No, there's a, there's one speaker there, an outdoor weather speaker that plays music. I mean, and they try to keep it at a tone where the pool can hear it, but I mean, you know, again, I mean, it's still going to carry over to the apartments behind it.
Have you had any complaints?
There's usually a couple every year, but they used to, the, the pool speaker now currently is on the main building facing
They didn't have speakers, did you go with that?
They used to be in the back and I guess the wire got all chewed up just from age and they just, it was easier to put it on the other building, so, I mean, that can probably be.
But how long has the pool been there?
Exactly.
How long has the ball field been there? How long has Sacred Heart been there? I think they had fifty year anniversary, oh, years ago. No progress.
Right.
Until.
But when you look at, you can't sit there and say, you can't give stipulations. That's discrimination. You know, the city has super.
But can't you grandfather serve the lights?
None of this. This is the first time someone feels as though they're offended by this fall. And you say, I'm not sure. Say our cops goes to ask a birthday party or a wedding reception and they get this fine and then you go down. All of the stuff going on, there were other houses going on and you're, I'd be very asked, I think he's going to push us. It's also something that is not enforced efficiently, effectively across the board. It, the first time someone gets discharged for that and all of that and they find out other houses are the same thing and they get charged for that. It's going to be tough. Enforcement on this is going to be very tough and is going to be very difficult.
Depends on how we write it and how we measure and, and what kind of information you give the deputies. They're, they're doing the best they can, like, turn it down, they got very little.
And then, then you, then you have a deputy that's allowed to use their own discretion. So they can show up, they're like, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not, just goes to turn it down. And then the next day they can do that and then the next I was going to be on five.
Just like.
It's, it's like to be turned it down, keep it down, but that's the problem again. Uh, we just like, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, so when we write this up, do we need to make everything separate? Well, okay, well, I mean, should we, should we make things separate for a business, for? Residential. Residential and? Commercial. Yeah.
Well, you know, you're in here in simple business. You're on the main street down. You know, so that's going to be a, present challenges themselves. You know, um, the near and general business, uh, by, you know, a motorcycle coming down two thirty-five and the wire and stuff keeping the outside of the car, you know, or engine braking the truck, you know, so.
And with only one or two deputies in town, it's going to be tough.
I think the duty of them need to be there to cover this comparison concerns and to cover this man's concern and everyone else's concern, but either one of those things is going to be very hard to enforce, but they will.
Well, we can write it up and then when push comes to shove, if we need to, we can enforce them. So, you know, as far as like the brakes and the loud musics and things like that, if people coming through, you know, if you catch one, great, you know, maybe they won't do it again. That's one less person. So maybe it won't make an immediate effect, but, you know, maybe five years down the road, it will, you know? The semi trucks like, yeah, I'm not going to get a ticket today. I'm not going to use that, that brake and make a loud noise or something like that.
But also when you downshift, when you semi from downshift, it sound like your J brake, but it isn't.
Yeah.
The J brake is going to kick on at twenty-five mile an hour. I don't care what you do. I had a diesel, mine was kicked on one time when I was going down. It hit seventy-five mile an hour with my trailer and it hit that J brake at about fifty-two, which, and I thought it was, I didn't know. It hit, uh, the J brakes aren't going to do that at twenty-five mile an hour. When they downshift, yeah, they get loud, they're diesels. Diesels for those parts, they got muscle.
J brakes might not kick into your forty-five mile an hour.
Sorry, man.
J brake might kick into your forty-five mile an hour.
Right. Why do I know the lowest speed, but I know that seventy-five?
When you downshift, you're right, you're going to get, you're going to hear the RPM kick out of the engine.
And they use their engine to slow down to the, to save the brakes, but they use the brakes and that's when you get that high pitched squeal and it just sound like it's all apart.
And then we should think about moving the speed of the signs up for, if we can.
Move up further.
When they come up, you know, downshift, you know, a lot of.
That's a state that has to do with it.
Yeah, that's a state.
That's a state, I believe.
I'm just. So I should watch something when that, what do you, what do you mean with speed times? Well, I mean, right, when you hit that thirty-five, that's only start downshifting here.
I would, I would think within the.
Is that only, it's thirty-five, all three, two thirty-five, that doesn't go down to twenty-five. I think it's.
It goes, it goes to twenty-five when you come around the curb or high, just before you hit the.
Dominus, yeah.
Coming north, it's thirty-five.
Breaking the law all these years.
Right, where is, is twenty-five from the curb?
Like dominus coming north?
Correct.
It's, it's just where you get the dominus, dominus is twenty-five mile an hour.
So if I'm coming up on Park Lane, hit dominus, twenty-five.
Let me scoot it back.
No, actually, it's forty-three, it's twenty-five, that's thirty-five.
Yeah, it's thirty-five.
Soon as we get into town.
Park to, to.
Inland Park. Okay, now one in town, downtown going twenty-five, one isn't good thirty-five.
Uh, when you get out by the house, just before you get the house, it's thirty-five. There are somewhere close to the guy through there, just past the man's tower. It, it jumps up to thirty-five, so.
If they obey.
Sure.
If they obey, yeah. That's the same with anything.
If they obey.
That's supposed to be, yeah, but no way that a vehicle could be so wrong. They also, I'm not even sure. It's actually. I was thinking that the police might already have the estimate in their heart because I think if you don't have a number, they could check to see how loud the vehicle is, come rate your chicken, take it for that. And so.
And I think if you have a number and it's still loud, one of them did with the cherry bomb, which I think they out all, you know, back in the eighties, seventies or so. Did they still sound loud? I thought they out all the year, but.
I used to have one in my truck. It's a one on the side, just straight. They were pretty cool when I was in high school.
So do we want to stay on this or do we want to move on to?
Um, I think it's going to take a lot of.
I was going to take forward just one more session.
I, I think we should, should pick one and, and start attacking it. You know, do we, do we start with residential and start focusing on that and get, get that to where we want it to be? Or do we look at it as a broad picture and just start piling in?
The residential, I agree with you behind you, if we're going to do anything, start with residential to a type of, of habit we create. Well, you never know when you're dealing with the public, so, uh, but it also needs to be the same whether it's in my neighborhood or the old people lives or in her neighborhood, where obviously there's a bunch of young people. I mean, I don't know the, you know, where the old people and the young people lives or middle aged people, I mean.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'll do respect everyone. I'd rather, if, if this is going to be done, I think we need to tackle all of those and this is why I say that. Because we still have people who maybe live, like Mr. Brin, in simple business, because there's simple business zoning actually encompasses, I think, back on Perch Street too. So, um, when I look at this G law thing again too, they actually have, I think I just spoke a little bit, uh, in the public that I have read this a little bit through, they tackle residential zones as class case, so they did qualify everyone from residential amount of, the same thing. Then there's C is a retail business, so that would cover our general business, which is a large chunk of North Main Street. Then they have their industrial, which would cover all our central business and also industrial. There is no sense of putting all this work into doing residential. See how it goes and then paying an attorney, sentences down the line, go ahead and do more research, you know, your share and get forward the first time.
Is it Church Street a bypass for two thirty-five?
It is an alternative.
So, you know, you, we have, I know we have semi running down, I think, you know, uh, they go down too late and they turn whichever way they're going to go or they go out Jefferson, whichever way they're going to go. Uh, I think they do that because they have a wire swing and they do, uh, main and Jefferson for, for the semis that are going east or west. So we would be very limited, I think, what we can do on Church Street as far as, because it's a mixture of residential business, it's also an alternate for state route. And, uh, so that's going to be, I think, a little tricky there too.
I think Church primarily is, um.
Business district, law department.
Office department. So you can get it to.
Why do you think it's a good idea?
State route.
I think it's not. To Church Route. Down by the city building.
Let's see if this money.
City building, up to the, uh, what's that restaurant?
State Street.
State Street and then it goes to see, it's, yeah, I'll just refer to them. It's generally office department, whole stretch. So, no, it might be simple business up to the fire department, the fire department.
So Randy, it says here, sound measured and subject conducted in accordance with sound measured procedures for public access. Anyone has a check in the emergency area setting?
I heard the state departments or something and then I was there on the, that was telling me because I, this thing is.
It is something that I've noticed since. They, um, this Washington state, they, uh, something.
That's why I'm going to talk, it seems like they covered a lot.
I think everybody needs to read this and mark what they like and what they don't like. And then the next step would be discuss all of that and see where we go next.
I also think of how we take, uh, several water stations that become, you know, well, one to the ordinance.
True, okay.
I think having the classes is the way to go. Class A, B and C. He, I, you know, or first reactions, because, because I don't know a whole lot about it. You know, I've never written a.
Church Street, it is. Follow me here, city building, that side of the road, from London on top, city building side of the road is all office department clear up into. Then going on to third park, a little more of a lane, which is probably a fire. On the other side of the street, we're dominated all the way up to the main, the lake, actually goes across the post office and the right side is simple business. So, um, Lake is a office department, central business, I don't know, maybe a church, I mean church, I'm sorry, church. Uh, but however, there are a few businesses, but it is a lot of residences, so I think we need to cover that as well.
And that could be one of the fourth class.
Yeah, could be.
North Lake is primarily part of. Why we have such a long section of this? Whole little section.
So are you interested in going ahead and set a date for the next work session? Someone suggest please?
I'd say maybe, maybe let everybody do some digging and reading and then, and then at the next, maybe next council meeting under other business, see if everybody's ready to set another work session, because the next council meeting is just a week or so away, so. That would probably be the better way. My, my opinion anyway.
I think that would be a good assumption to wait till the council meeting, here's time to go with this stuff.
Do you want to order that? I guess I'll put it on the.
We're not scared of anything for you right now.
No, put it on.
Yeah.
And recently it asked, like, um.
Is there any possible way, Mr. Witt, that we can do some type of sound surveying the city and any idea what that might cost or would you have to do some research with that?
I have enough of sound survey.
I'm only asking Mr. Collins his suggestions.
That would be have a survey that doesn't have very valid results because we don't survey a lot of population too and then get too many barriers that may not be in place and survey a day and then two days later.
Uh, I remember some cities have set up, uh, like sound monitors throughout their cities to record the sound and they put them there and leave them for, I don't know how they leave them actually.
I think that's something that we can discuss in twenty nineteen.
But again, you know, you have to set a security, somebody to speak up.
I'm going to go to Lowe's to the exhaust scan section and press all their buttons, but same.
Is anyone having invasion on that?
I, I'm going to Lowe's to look at their exhaust scans because they're rated for how many decibels they are. You can press little buttons, see how loud they are, just like five years ago. And so that way you can see what is the best one.
That would be a good look.
Also another thing we need to take into consideration if we're going to digest it, how loud is our, our tornado sirens?
Mower and.
Okay, there.
Weed eaters.
I can't hear. You can.
Snow blowers.
And snow blowers and.
They are loud.
James Coburn's truck.
James Coburn's truck.
It's got.
Lot of, various, lot of cars have different sound decimals, do you know? Mine's fairly quiet, the guy, the commercial people that customize their next quarter, I'm hearing new places.
On the YouTube, I have a decibel comparator. Okay. That's three guns, thirty-three seconds. Noisy house, fifty decibel. Apparently that is a fifty decibel noise and it is here, looks like a laundry mat dryer.
I don't think I can switch it accurate though, because you don't know the volume recording you were setting.
That was the neighbor, was that going on recording or? So that's pretty much fifty decibels. Yeah.
Good job. Yeah, so, so I, I really think I need to do something so we know what we're up against and can decide from there.
Um, I think we need to figure out how much that survey is going to cost and is that something you guys want to put the budget for twenty nineteen? That's great, but why would we have to re-fee all the money out of reserves? But it's already been done in twenty eighteen. What do you survey?
Do a sound survey of the city in various parts of the city, like over by the Mrs. Mary House, up on two thirty-five, uh, over by the pool, you know, various stops in the city. Various cops in the city, I mean, do you think, or do you have complaints about the rules?
You know, that's getting pretty complicated. I think, you know, the thing to do is, Mrs. Man, you said before, you know, it wasn't too long ago, where it's just being respectful neighbors. And, you know, we make the people aware, who are the offenders, at least residential wise, and we start slapping fines, where if a police officer has to come to your house more than twice, and they catch you with whatever device they have of breaking the rules, then you got a fine. And that's going to stop people, because no one wants to pay money. So, you know, is it, is it worth blaring your music, or whatever you're doing, worth a two-hundred, three-hundred dollar fine?
We just need to make sure too, that again, Hispanics are not going to be targeted in this town. I deal with complaints all the time. Eight out of ten complaints I deal with have to be neighbor A who's not Hispanic, and call them on name and be in this.
I, I work with...
I'd say, anyone here?
I, I, I work with a lot of Hispanic...
It doesn't make it a particular well, right, so it doesn't, but that doesn't mean all the people, because I'm the first one to go to the order of the JSP, and look up who's wrong.
I, I work with a lot of Hispanic people, and people from Iran, and Pakistan, and everywhere. I have Hispanic neighbors that are the sweetest people in the world. We trade flowers back and forth, and all of that. I don't care if you're green, or Martian, or, I don't care.
Noise is noise.
And disruption, and, and insensitivity, and, you're exactly right, turn it down when the deputy's there, and wait twenty minutes, and crank it back up. That's plaguing, you know, disregard for your neighbors, and for what law enforcement has to tell you. Uh, I think we've got a great starting place here, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. We go through this, and we see what we like and we don't like, maybe it's a, you know, starting point. And if we can, uh, get something that's workable for fixed locations, then that gives us someplace to go with moving traffic, and so on.
Yeah, agree.
That would be easy as crew fix. To them, it's put decimals on it, and again, we have to, I hate to use that word, but we have to find out somehow, how loud is this U V over by Miss Mary's House? And try to, you know, over by his house also, uh, find out at the pool. Evidently, everybody has this app on their front lawn, probably, like, that. So, if, if Mr. Larry could find out decimals on a busy day at the pool, we're going to have some ninety degree weather next week, I'm sure. Maybe he can find something towards, as far as the speakers at the pool, moving the, the back, the pool for backup, you know, pointing back this way, that would solve any complaints. If we have one complaint, that's too many, uh, and have the noise come back up towards the building of the pool, instead of how, what that would cost, uh, to be doing the wire. I'm sure it's been looked into at one time right now.
The budget's already been done for eighteen, so a lot of these changes.
Well, I don't think we can do anything until next year. It would have to be in the 2019 budget.
Especially, I mean, with those wires, I mean, where's the, where's the transfer of wire now?
It's not, it's ran, it goes off the building, and, you know, the pool's surrounded by a tall fence, so most of it rides the fence line, and then some of it's underground, I mean, not real far, it's just, you know...
Yeah, it can go straight back.
Right.
Are you going to talk about wireless speakers?
Yeah, the top of that up to night.
Today's A and wireless speakers are not too crazy.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's a, that's a perk that we'd like to have, but it's not...
I'm just saying, forget it, it's been a cocker coming here to take a whole new line, a new wire, you know, so it's all for the...
Yeah, good testaments and see.
What do you say, there's going to be a...
You, you, Matt, you can dig a small ditch, and just stick the wire down to the ground, because they're not going to be doing a tiller around at the pool, unless, on business side.
I can't imagine that's going to be a problem, driven by a pool, and you're driving by on your car with the windows down, and you barely hear...
Yeah, I've never heard of that.
But it's, the speaker's ringing.
Barely hear the pool.
Yeah, you got, you got, the departments, departments right behind us, and then the other departments on the other side of the way.
They had somebody call this year and complain, and then five minutes after they complained, a guy called and said, "Don't pay any attention to that old lady, we love that music."
Oh my gosh.
I'm serious, that actually happened, he's like, "Turn it up, we love the eighties music."
So they actually called the pool and made a complaint?
Yeah, they called it able.
Uh, I don't know if this dude, like, decibel, I think it gets confusing, I believe one of these are, uh, they just said, if you're, uh, being away from the property line here, so, so do a decimal limit, or are they just distance?
A hundred feet could be three houses down, if your neck's four to the wall. When I lived in, you know, Platte...
That's a pretty good argument.
I was in my backyard, and I could hear your music, your damn music was killing that.
I know, you go over there, and take it different, if you're, if you're in Northwood, you can literally pick your around, around the door, and touch here, the neighbor's door, I mean, heck.
You can hear him talking.
When you are two, you got about fifty, hundred feet between you and the house, that's a different story. Whereas R five, you, you know, I think, R five, R five, yeah, you're on R five.
Well, you, you're not going to plead to everybody, but if we set a rule, and I think, um...
And I think the fine needs to be significant, to make an impact. You're only going to charge them twenty-five or fifty bucks.
You own building, charging them a lot by state code, and there's going to be a missing, so you won't be able to turn saving, and charge them five hundred bucks.
It's going to be signed with state law, signed with the court there, eleven, hasn't paid court fee.
Yeah, sorry.
Court costs there. And there's a progression, if I'm not mistaken, in the state law on, of certain things, and more time can get caught.
So you can touch a recent, like, out there. Like, I don't think we get some way, take it first time, they're going to go to court.
No, that's, that's... Give them, give them a warning first time, then fine them. If you've got another, uh, same offense within thirty days, then you get fined again. And within ninety days, you get fined again, and it just, it keeps getting worse and worse and worse, until somebody gets on that stage.
Sounds, sounds disturbing.
It would have to be a warning tip, and they would actually have to write them, like they do for traffic or whatever.
But it has to be under defendant, like, because you came to say this house, because they could move and go to a different rental house. They can't start with the actual property address. I think that someone could mark the address, but you can't sit there and say, because the next time coming around, it'd be that the person was in the house. Really, you can't, or something, that happens, something about the four, they, they... So, I mean, when it comes to the finding of it, and how you're going to put people in court, that's all going to be, that's not dictated by you guys. That's going to be dictated by the state law, and ORC, and that will have a role. That one, whoever is that, that physician at that one time, um, to, to take that analysis to it. You know, like, you can only use this for the first, or this for the second, or this for the third. We, you guys, the council can do that. But my understanding, I could be wrong.
Right, the court, yeah, the court, have court fee, that's the state.
And, and so, at some point, we hear, we will hear from Lynette and the sheriff's office, I mean, you know, get some...
One of these council members, they're trying to...
Get something from them on what's enforceable, and, you know, what would, what would help them do their jobs.
I can give input on force business policy, it's going to have to kind of, the council.
So instead of a speed trap, we want to be a soundtrack for a while.
Yeah. Sometimes you got to do a mark, so the people get to pull the hags.
Hopefully they don't hear my lawnmower.
Do, do we want to move on to, back up to A now, or, uh, I think, I don't think there's much more we can talk about in a few weeks?
Now, let's, let's read up on it.
Till we read a material, and maybe another work session or two, and then proceed with some type of ordinance.
I appreciate it, everyone, thank you very much. I just said I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It wasn't very comfortable, I have some good ideas.
Well, and there's, uh, there's two other people, especially, that we've been talking about, and the first, that is four.
I didn't send counsel, I didn't, um, uh, my store, chicken nugget, uh, so I did bring a demon, so I, I, did my court, do you know you guys separate the last?
No.
No. So there it is, I copied, I, I know if you did or not.
So Mr. Green, before you have a little grass and nuisance discussion...
Um, I'll be honest with you, that is the only thing that really, I mean, the, the grad, the peddler sign, and it's got something together for the, the, so you got to rock that up. I'll have to go through it before I have that. Um, so apparently, the actual city, called Green River, I think, Washington, Wisconsin, actually passed this ordinance back in nineteen thirty-one. And it looks like they had amended it in thirteen, to make it what's new, with the feel-good area that we live in, where it was inclusive, to say that right now, this is... So what I did is I wrote down history back in terms of, this is, uh, what a sign looks like, or could look like. And then, this is a city, this is a city of Blair, Wisconsin, this is actually in their codes, how they set it up in their codes. So it's this one right here, the plain one, and then this ordinance right here is up on eleven, the St. Augustine Beach, they're actually coordinating to put it there. So again, this is going to be a, just educate yourself on it, and take a back look at it. What I see when I skimmed over this, you can't just sit there and say, you cannot come to our city. That is illegal. You would have to allow them to come to your city, it would be up to your individual resident, they're soliciting on their door. If a citizen does not have their soliciting on their door, it's fair enough. You guys, as a city, it doesn't seem like you can just say, you cannot come here at all. And that makes sense, now, this is from a different state, but the city, David, got sued, and they had to change all their peddler stuff. To where, um, I live down in Dayton, and they would, like, they arrested money if you're at the corner, and I can't go, like, now, they can't.
They're everywhere.
So a lot of the laws has changed. Again, I don't know if this law that was done in Wisconsin would apply, but it, it's something that council's going to have to look into. So you can't, from what I see, you can't just say, you can't come at all, you have to put a sign up there, and then your residents would have to seek out, and there's soliciting signs for the personal property. And if they don't have that sign up there, they still be allowed to knock. I would even be shocked if we can even charge people to come to the city. So I will, I mean, I will look into that.
Do, do we not have a ordinance now, that they have to have a bit?
Well, yeah, that may be illegal, because that's what David got sued for.
Oh, really? When was that?
A couple years ago. So I need to have that look in back, because reading this and all the stuff I was doing, I was like, okay, we need to make sure...
These are, I think these are based on, you said, Washington?
Uh, they're different, but the thing about it is, it's like, this is Green River, I don't know, Wisconsin, Wyoming.
Because you can't stand here with those state laws.
That's what it is, it's in Utah, it's in Utah, oh, and it's Wyoming, I couldn't think of that, Dale. Uh, and then this ordinance is from Florida, San Antonio, and then this one's from Wisconsin. So again, informative at this point, um, these are the signs, again, this would be a policy decision, we can't... At that point in time, if you know what you guys want to do with the ordinance, and then get on that ball, and let me know, if you guys want to be signed, we'll make it.
Well, apparently, our, the ordinance we have in books is not working. Because innumerable times, I've been bothered with it. We call the deputies, the deputies can't track them down. My thinking is, number one, if we, if we got an ordinance on the books, and we're not following it, what good is it?
Just because an ordinance on the books doesn't mean we have the ability to manpower and force everything we have. That's a trick, especially if a salesman come out, you know, they don't sign with the city, but we're allowed to recall.
And then, you know, and when you talk to these people about the fact, you have a permit, yeah, my boss has got a, okay, hold it, guys, it's got to be on you. Well, we were not notified of that, okay, that's the reason, that's a factor. As far as I'm concerned, if somebody comes into town, they are, say, charged under this ordinance, now we send out to their parent company a registered letter, stating, okay, this one's on us, the second one, and the third one is going to be charged to you, plus the fine, that the individual's going to pay, and make it corporate people responsible.
If you're allowed to do that.
But if, we can't, as a city, I don't think, and maybe somebody as smart as I am, and correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot dictate to a company that they have to pay their employees' fine.
I'm not saying to pay their employees' fine, I'm stating the fact that if they, number one, the employee...
And as soon as they leave in front of my house, I go out, see where they're at, or go over inside, and they must be moved, beamed up to Scotty or something.
Well, the other factor is, we could make a non-solicitation list, that would be available at City Hall, these people could get the copy of that list.
Well, they could just go, well, you need to put lots of background citizens, I, I, we, I, we're already stretched thin at the city board. I don't have time to sit there and manage a database of non-soliciting, people moving in, and people moving out. It's up to the citizens, if they want to do that, no solicitation, put it right there. I think one of these cities allowed for these guys to do that, and then you don't have to do, like, a sign commit or anything, you can put it in an exception. If someone walked up the door, they can have a whole no solicitation sign up there. If that person now goes past that no solicitation sign, now you get charged. And I think that's why they did all that, but this is public ground, this is public property, we can't restrict who comes in there. You can't. That's why, when it comes out, if you look at this ordinance, it says, prohibiting solicitation of private residences, at which there's been posted no solicitation sign.
Or you can post a trespassing sign on your property.
Yeah, so I think a lot of it has to go back to individual, private property.
I put a residence, put a trespass sign up, and it's enforceable, and the city has, has nothing to do with it, it's between you, the cops, and the courts, and whoever trespasses. If you're allowing that.
And it's sad, because they sent people up there for this, probably, and others. I'm, I'm just waiting for the encyclopedia people to come back.
Wikipedia.
Did they still make it? Wikipedia books?
I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
We're going to come out, Wikipedia books.
I was a traveler, I was a sailor for better than thirty years, and every, the different jobs that I've had, every training session, they said, "Were you seeing no solicitation sign?" Going, going, because they have no sailor's license, and that's why they put the sign up.
Well, I don't know if they've been a new car a lot, but I take some phone calls from these residents, and they're lucky they get a shotgun gun right in front of their face, and get the heck out of my property. But some of these people are livid, no time, and I slammed the door in his face, I did this, I did that, um, I think it needs to be addressed, I just don't know today's A, what we can, can do.
And, and you have the churches in there, except they can knock on your door in my works, unless it's a trespassing sign.
Churches can?
Yes, sir. The, uh, Supreme Court, we, uh, confirmed that they can do that.
Yes.
So I'm getting to, yes, he's knocking there down, but, you know, they don't have a...
You're in a house, you're not going to...
Your mom will just let a woman do what they want.
If you still may have ever had that city going, be getting charged for another four.
I don't have to charge, or I'm not, I'm not doing it, because that's just one more thing I have to, we're not looking to do that, right now, it's a five bucks. So that pays for you to get the paperwork, so, you know, um, I'm, like I said, they're, they're, they're in here, some people get permits, some people don't. And I, I mean, they're, everybody and their brothers in the county, they're people who are out.
Well, it's like you said, you just, you can't be everywhere to police it, whether it's speeding.
Oh, we, I mean, I'll be on the, that was one hundred percent, we were, I don't think we're calling it. If a person does not call in, we don't, I mean, we, we sure don't, I don't know if they're in the city or not.
And they're split, because they, they will hit two or three houses on the street, and as soon, they, they must have main signals or something, because they have a car pickup on their corner.
Well, they don't believe you, like, I, this happened literally like two weeks ago, I was checking on a house in Pikeville, and they had given us complaints. And I was going down Pike, from like, Hyde Avenue, coming down, and I passed him, so I put on my brakes, and I put it in reverse. I'm like, "Do you have a permit for that?" And he's like, "No, I don't," like, "Wait, you need to go to the city, go to the..." That's it, they say, "Oh, I was?" And I'm like, "No," and went around the block. Because when I was pulling away, he acted like he was going back to his car. As soon as I turned around, corner, on the other side of that, and I'm like, "Okay, it's a no," so I stepped back around, and he just turned around and started walking the streets again. So I backed out the block, and what they, they said, "Oh, you got a permit?" That was, he's like, "Well, I'm going to go out with this house," and I haven't had my city, and my gloves, I pulled it out. Because I'm a city man, you need to go right now, but you're in a city, so I'm like, oh, no. They need to, even, city building, I've done it.
Yeah, city, probably. Or you might have another, another district, another, the, uh, do we want to move on to B now?
Uh, what, how do you guys want to move to the Green River? I'm, this is near, here you are, so I'm just giving both sides of the fence here what I see. How, do you guys want to approach this like you, we did with the noise? Will you guys take this information, you read it, do some of your own research on around, and then maybe set another work session up, like a part two of this?
What are you talking about, Ray? What are you talking about?
About for the, B.
Oh, okay.
I would like to read it over here.
Yeah.
We will probably have to introduce an interaction, and a work session will offer these items, because I don't think we're going to get anything solved or, or come to an agreement on the night, before we read all this information there. Anybody agree or disagree with that?
I think the peddler will probably be the easiest of all these, really. I mean, we know what's legal, find out what's legal and what's not legal, see which one we like the best, and vote on it. Well, we can both, I mean, we'll, we'll let you know.
I mean, you said you were going to have a check of our current code, right?
Make sure that's, you got it, by the Slade reference. If people write the ordinance, people will keep contracts coming up.
Can you let us know by Monday?
People will keep contracts.
Well, we haven't, we haven't got the, uh, talked about the Green River ordinance, ordinance.
But you'll let us know on Monday if it's up to speed?
By, I think.
It'll be a couple of weeks, probably, or more.
Okay.
Is there medical for Monday?
I don't know. On the turn, so, that's because we're...
There is one thing, state in their solicitation exempts items that are normally home delivery, milk, eggs, butter, use me.
Diapers?
What?
Diapers, these are home delivered diapers.
I would ask if they still be exempt, almost still be exempt.
I don't think it's going to touch that, because are you, do you have a guy on our board or?
Occasionally, my carriers, my paid bounty for reaching some spread. All depends on how aggressive they want to be. I don't have time for it anymore.
Yeah, I just want to see if our current notice service is going to be good to go. If it is, I'll, we'll, we'll, we'll contact. But I don't think that's going to be done.
On to, uh, item D, even the negotiation, city council, Mr. Ridge.
I think he's referred to. Primarily, this allows us, meaning two council persons, to be on, which is, where we come to that? Let's see, Public Employee Department.
I think you know that something will have to leave. And when those negotiations come up with the vision?
Uh, her progress in, in, that ends this year.
Are we seeing a move?
It's a perfect, uh, I will be starting negotiations a lot earlier this year, starting the council, you guys on the street, on the street, I'll, I'll know whether we're going to be demanding either, which is the biggest, I don't know. And I don't want to go, Mr. Cow, I think, Cow, you're right.
Yeah, he just said it.
Got it. So I don't know, what do you have? I know the rate one from the city. This year, they also, I want to update about the, few state unions in the United States, the Supreme Court, the Janes case, which is basically prior to that rule, regardless if you wanted to be in the union or not, you have sole favor to pay what the voluntary share dues, while the US Supreme Court struck that down. So now, so now if you do not want to be in the union, you do not have to be, you do not have to pay the voluntary share. One of the figures, I read, there's one, uh, said there is about $47 billion nationwide to slack funding. Um, I did get a letter from the union president down there, uh, I don't know how F A S S E or whatever it is, that he wanted to start bargaining in September. So, with that being said, I think, uh, we might have a little earlier than what we want to, uh, but I think we have a lot of parents.
Is there any city or boards that's in the union indicating that they don't work with the union?
I did not ask that question, and I, that was a big, uh, I don't know.
Why, no, you didn't?
Maybe one, I, I didn't ask you, but I, what I see is like the younger ones won't really care, they don't want to work. That's, that's what I see. But the new ones we bring in, they're, they're a little upset they, like, for, like, I don't want to be in the union, since I have to pay, I must be in. Now, that stipulation gone, I don't know what's going to happen.
And, and the thing about it, because they don't pay, and the union dues, the union strives to represent.
I don't think under this new rule, it does.
Did that change too, or is that?
I think it's all changed.
I'm going to have to consider some of the reasons, because I know at one time you could.
I hadn't read the law, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, incidentally.
Well, I've partially read, no, they do not get representation of the union, they do not get the union pay scale. So that's the target from there, or completely, what's the word, want to use?
Independent.
Now, they push themselves away from union, so they don't have to pay any union dues.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't necessarily know, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know if it's effective now, I don't know if it comes into effect in 2019 or it may come into effect in 2020. I, like I said, I don't run the rule, I just know the, how it worked out.
I think we, council needs to read the handout of Mr. Cook, and, and again, after the next, uh, work session, bring it up, talk about it, what we want to do.
I think with this, Mr. Cook, or someone needs to send this to Lynette.
Well, I thought the way it was supposed to be done, council was supposed to tell you to send this to Lynette.
However, however what the new rule is, whatever it is, if it turns out, that's fine.
To have the ordinance written, right.
The works are, sometimes she's going to do some reviewing, to make sure it's even okay, and say, all right.
Which paper? You, Bill? I'm sorry. What paper? Did you pass something out that I didn't get?
Public authorities bargaining transparency.
I don't think we got that one.
The, if, uh, if, if Mr. Ridge agrees, if he would, I can make this into a PDF.
It's hard, I don't think it can.
You have a PDF, I want you, uh, send it to Lynette and help council, along with the manager and the clerk, so we all have a, a couple of top one. If anybody had an objection with Mr. Cook, to Mr. Ridge?
No, I actively talk about this, um, I don't want people to think that I'm going to get offended if this happens, I think it's a great tool. I'm actually in support of this 100%. So I think it's going to give certain council members an insight of what goes on in these negotiations about the needs of the hourly employees in opposed to using me as a middle man. Um, so I, I fully support this, and I don't want people to think I don't. I do not look at it, I step within my hours of boundaries, because I will be there. But I welcome the opportunity to have any council members that are with these negotiations and go through the pain that I go through.
The only thing, what we added to this, is a basic disclaimer that the two council members would be majority picked by council. I see who sits on.
Lynette, Lynette make other two cents in there, because at the end of the day, it does fall under the general day-to-day operations of the city, but at the same time, too, it's a, it's a contract that needs to be executed on the half city council. So I don't know what this is going to bring up, with her, or ridiculous wall. Um, I know other, I've heard other cities doing this, um, but in Ohio, it doesn't happen. I think it's just unique and outside of the box. And actually, I was a compliment mayor, I told you this, is they have recommended bringing, uh, these two council members into the negotiations with the city manager.
Union?
No, with other conference, the union recommended this there, that's why I have a compliment, so.
So this is not? The city, the city of Dayton does it, and it's the same union representative, to represent the city of Dayton.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hearing a couple of different things here, maybe I can just clarify for me. Two council members that are going to sit in and listen and observe while reading out the negotiations, or two council members who are actively going to participate in the negotiations? I think you want to be very clear about.
We haven't witnessed yet, and I'm assuming, and Mr. Cook can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that the council members would participate?
To an extent of their knowledge.
Yes.
I mean, they're not going to know those, and that's the day-to-day operations. Now, we've done our negotiations first time, isn't, we have a round, and then the party's split, the party goes in there, our party's in there, we can talk some of our parts. Um, I think council will be there for some things, but council's not able to offer much of the focus of our aspects of the negotiations.
So this is a proposed?
Yeah, it is a proposal, but it's a good way, I think the negotiations are not a open meeting now. Our negotiations with our collective bargaining, you know, I mean, I forgot any of this, I mean, I don't know, if I last I checked, but you don't have very many negotiations that are open. Yeah, so, um, that's when you deal with employees, stuff like that, so, um, I don't know. Now, that'd be another good point, because now a council member's not involved, doesn't have to be, it's open meeting, because it's on that one. Well, if there's a council member involved? Yes, and that's really something that happens. But I don't feel comfortable in a negotiation, having negotiations right here. Sometimes you get in a personal discussion about some stuff, and that's why they need this, and that's why they need that, you know? Um, but at the end of the day, you have a contract that is public, correct? So, I don't know, the council, it's not prepared for the negotiations part. Right, sure.
Negotiations, all negotiations I said, when I walked in G U, was all down, basically at some place, uh, with management, labor reps, whatever, and you sit there and you say hi, nice one and over, and then that was about the extent of the concentration. But again, it was a general mode, so, and I'm sure you're probably the same way.
They never seemed nice.
Never seemed nice, but we tried to be nice, but it didn't last long.
Are they pretty simple, they obviously are. They are, it didn't get, it didn't get too crazy, it didn't. We didn't change a lot last time. My dissection took a, took the discrimination, potential discrimination and potential liability of the city out. Other than that, they got the 25 cent, 30 cent rate, health insurance, still pay at the rate it was. Yeah, my dissection really took out any liability or potential discrimination that the city could come off, but they're playing with it. Mainly when it says city manager may, versus the city manager shall or shall not, you can't give your city manager that, you can't give them that discretion when it comes to that. Because the person may get the benefit, the person may not get the benefit, now the person beats their set, the person ain't got it, they didn't get it. So it took away all the may, and added the shall, or the shall not. Now, if this council were going to change, that's where they decide. And if they change a lot, then that's when it's probably backlash, and that's when it's not going to be great. Not, I'm just saying, I'm saying it's a great, that's all. If you give them what they want, it's peaceful, and when you start telling them to do stuff, it's all, it's all crazy.
Council, have anything else they have to bring up, uh, or can we do that?
Yeah, just have to.
Okay. Does council have any more comments or description on any of these four subjects?
We didn't talk about grass division.
Pardon me?
We didn't do that.
Oh, I thought we did that.
Can I just take that, Mr. Cook, in mind?
Whatever you want to do at this point, uh, we need to basically look at our weed and grass programs. Probably the next year, 2019, we also need to look at the condemned, uh, buildings. I think we're going to direct that to Mr. Hale on Friday.
Yes, Mr. Black.
What I'm looking at is, for example, in the summertime, the cruise, street crews and everybody else are pretty much small. For them to get around all the weeds and the grasses that need to be done, perhaps we should be looking at contracting out this weed and grass program.
Where do you have the ability to contract it? That was put to the legislation a couple of years ago, caveat with you, it was worse with a contractor than not. And I say that now we only use one company, and that's expected to have a bill line, I can't say that they give this a credit, that's the deal, it's like 30 bucks a lot, which is stellar. This year, we had a little outlier. Um, we were, we were down one seasonal, we hired one less seasonal than we normally do, and then also we've had a lot of people out for injuries and/or significant other injuries, they have to serve. So this year, we've been very tough with manpower. I know that we've put a good, got a good chunk of it knocked out. Um, I think our issue lies with vacant structures who are owned with banks. That is by far the bare law. Um, we have like three violations in the city, so it says basically, if you're three violations, we don't need to give any more violations, we can show up, take your grass and go. You know, the other upside of that is, the moment it goes to the sheriff's sale, all that money goes away. I've had to write off $10,000 for the property mortgage, because someone bought the house from sheriff's sale. You can, you don't have to take off of water or sewerings, that can stay, but any kind of public vacant nuisance, by the law comes off. So, it's a double edged sword with these houses that are vacant. Um, that's why some of these cities cut the grass once a year, twice a year, and that is it.
Can, would any city send a bill directly to the owner of the property?
If it's owned by the bank, we send it to the bank, it just ends up on their assessment of taxes in the bank, once it goes so bad, someone that, they, you can usually buy it at the sheriff's sale, they, they saw a tax, you can see, and then the moment it goes to sheriff's sale, I get a call from the auditor, or from the sheriff, whoever gets to me first, and the regular take all this money off, and it's gone. So that's why a lot of these cities do it once or twice a year, and that is it, because so if we can find a way, we're going to have a meeting Friday, the moment you are really under tax, what is the speed to the cost of the city to cover up that house? So we can turn around and sell, if we're accident enough, and we're going to lose a vacant one anyway. Or we can tear that house down, I'd like to see use some money from 2019 budget to allow for us to take possession of these houses in there now. I cannot look in the history of our city budget ever to find out when the city has been lying on money, planning to take it, and that's a lot of issues. And we don't have that line, not 2018, I could pull $7,000, and I'm going to tear this house, it has to be allocated in that.
When we put these, uh, let's see, fees related to grass removal on the tax duty, how does that go on?
Through an ordinance.
Okay.
Every August, we'll do it.
Is that going on as a lien?
Goes against assessment of the property tax.
It's an assessment and not a lien. What's the chance of putting that on as a lien? Because I understand that all liens have to be paid before that property can be sold.
Say that was a state law, says the reason why I'm doing it is what it is, because it's a, it's a nuisance, and it's not a, I don't know, I don't, I'm telling you, I'm telling you right now, I don't know, but I'm telling you, you will not have a change until.
Well, I mean, my thoughts, if we can put it on as a lien, and that way we can guarantee our money coming back.
Maybe define lien. Because I'm sure it's a definition, why, because of lien.
Anybody, anybody can put a lien on any property, like they did work or something, and you did not pay them, they can go to the court, have a lien put upon your property, and with that property is sold, that lien has to be paid at that time.
We used to do this to recover the garbage and refuse collection fees.
Cook, oh, Kyle, so we could. Yeah, but you look a lot, you know. You have.
I got it. Uh, Montgomery County, city of Dayton.
Yeah, hey, you can't, both of them are fighting liens now against Long Zay. And this is federal, they, they, federal.
City of Dayton, Midtown, does, Franklin does, they're federal brand out there, they go after, get, the neighbor can maintain the property, mow the grass, et cetera, I think it's two to three years after that, the property becomes his.
Longer than that.
They, they, I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, I know, uh, if, uh, in cities, in just about any city, and I think this is state law, if you maintain a section of property for 20 years, you can claim that property as your own?
Well, I'm sure it's not.
But you have to, you, you have to notify them that you're, you're taking that property from... Where I put my new fence up, my property was in two foot over the back of my property. When I tore that fence down and had it do a put out, I put it back on property. But it's just inside of a little bit, two or two.
All you do here on this, you know, this is something that the city has to work with the federal government. For the grant, for the grant, the grant comes out. Let's say the neighbor next to you didn't mow the grass, it was almost as high as the house. You go in and start mowing grass, and I, I think they use three maybe five years that they maintain the property.
So they did that through an ordinance or something?
Yeah, it's through a grant, federal, got it.
But there has to be law somewhere behind that.
Well, the city takes possession of the property.
Through the banking.
Think this is a land agent.
Uh...
Think this is a land agent.
Either way, the people who maintained it after so many years, they get the property.
I would rather allocate money in 2019, but take possession of that property, tear it down, and sell it back a little bit, like that.
We just got out of Twin Creeks, we want to start, we want to start a new property again?
Totally different scenario.
Make it be a lien instead of assessment, and then we're done.
Well, I think you don't have a problem with lien versus assessment, because I think the county auditor is going to be assessment for water or assessment for lien. Doesn't matter what it's titled, it's a matter of the purpose of why it was put on in the first place. So I don't think if it's assessment or lien, they may come back and say, because it's a share sale, it still needs to go away. If it's not a share sale, or any kind of closure process, then it stays on.
Even a share sale, if there's a lien on that property?
I'm just saying, I mean, it's not so much of a term lien, it's a function of what that lien came from. So you didn't pay your water bill, that is a blue water lien.
But it's a way to work done, and, uh, pay, that is also a lien, that has to be paid upon sale.
State law, private law may classify it as a grass lien, or whatever the case may be. Because that article did not say anything about it going to share sale. It just said that they start really on lien. Wait, we could possibly do that too, how, if the state law says, share sale, regardless of a grass lien or grass assessment, it has to go away. You got to look at the subject of the lien, grass versus public nuisance versus water and sewer leaks. Those are two different components. So the state names that are going to say, you can keep your water and sewer on, because that is the thing that used your service, that used your facility, versus you chose to cut the grass because it just didn't look good. So I'm just, I'm not arguing here, I'm just trying to give you my two cents about how, when it comes to certain stuff like this, it's only going to get split down. It'll be split, it'll be split down there. So you need to figure out, is this, is the subject, is it a share sale, is that going to make it come off, regardless if it's a water, or a grass lien, or a grass assessment? So at the end of the day, a lien goes on to the taxes if it's not paid, or has a...
No, they're going to make a mortgage, any lien, they're not going to...
So before they sell?
And it has to be paid for, and it has to be paid for the proceeds of the sale.
And if you're a lien holder, then you have certain rights about whether you're willing to accept the public price of buying the property?
Actually, I think the highest hopes, they have that option, if it's somebody to cover on a lot of key, you have to know. That they have to, because of all the liens, I believe, under state law, they have to get at least that much out of that in an auction, or a share sale order, which is an option. If I have a question with a dollar, if I have all these...
And from all the brass, have the bank or financial institution that owns it, that can help me?
It's not so much, we have people living in our house, stuff like that. A lot of them are more of those than banks, actually, because usually banking would take care of stuff. They don't want to be cash. There's a bank issue, like kids like, um, they had, they bought a house, you know? And they just pulled it, and it's folded, and stuff like that. Those are the ones that are past repair, those are the ones that need to be condemned and then torn down.
One made up, I don't know, it's a structure.
Wow, I have wrecked too much, yeah, I love to shoot. The north of the sun, so you can't even...
You know, there's a lot of things that...
Which is five, maybe, in the...
We bought, like, we bought a lot of houses last month, there used to be one in Claymore. And the neighbors would pay this, and it's empty, kind of tear it down, and it's more, it's more... City takes ownership of it, it's going to be condemned house, so the city will be raising it, and then what you do is sell it, park it, wouldn't they, or where you sell it and then you replace it?
Okay, uh, because the council, at the next council meeting, you want to suggest another work session on the upper topic? Turn it over, what else?
I think we probably should.
Uh, if there's nothing else from council, Mr. Ridge, anything for you? And, 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 and...
I'm sorry. Just make, on your Green River, on your pedaling, could you consider not allowing anybody to pedal after the, like, eight, nine knocks on my door? I live on the corner, I get a ton of...
Oh, they want to speed it forward, I think. Not the thing to give up, we do that. Um, the meeting is adjourned.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah?